Commissioner Morgan, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge this evening?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Can I do it in Gaelic?
I suppose. I don't think it's ever been done before.
Sure. I'm kidding, of course.
What do you think Pamela? Should we begin?
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening and welcome to the April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. To all of those attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, there are two options. For those using Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to speak to the commission. Please note, you may only address the commission once per agenda item. Pamela, would you give us a roll call, please?
I am gonna ask Madeline to do that.
Oh, Madeline, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Chair Biassodi?
Here.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lethen?
Here.
Commissioner Madden?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Thank you. Madeline, would you set us up for the pledge of allegiance and we will be led this evening by Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
I pledge I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
You are.
Um. Item one, approval of the minutes for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. That's right.
That's all right, go ahead.
Commissioner Morgan, before you make a motion, can I ask for a correction to be made? Um, under the pledge, uh, we mistakenly misspelled, uh, Vice Chair Harmon's last name. Um, you know, there's a little tail, um, at the end of O, so we will add the tail back in at the corrected version.
I will move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I second that.
All right, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Five zero minutes approved.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, item two, public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone in the public wishing to address the commission with items that are, we're not speaking about or scheduled for this evening, uh, please do so at this time. Uh, once again, for Zoom users, please raise your hand button and for those on the phone, star nine. Yeah, wait just a second or two. And Madeline, if you'd let us know if anyone's got their hands raised.
Yes. We currently have no speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to item three then. Any conflicts of interest this evening? None?
Okay. I recall, I recall I had one.
Um, Mr. Chair, so, uh, Vice Chair Harmon and also Commissioner Madden are conflicted out of the second item.
Okay. Can we still proceed with, uh, the remaining members?
You need another member and I am actually talking to Commissioner Johnson right now. She is having trouble with logging on, so we can take it slowly. Um, she's having a bit, a bit of technical tech, uh, difficulty. Um, so we can continue. Madeline, uh, Commissioner Johnson is not finding the link to log on.
Okay.
So if you don't mind sending her the link, maybe to her email?
I will do that.
Thank you. And, uh, and you, uh, Mr. Chair, you have a whole quorum for the first item.
Okay, very good. So let's move on with the first item then, which is for a fifteen fifty El Camino Real. It's a request for a use permit pursuant to section twelve eighty-four two ten of the San Bruno Municipal Code to obtain a type seven zero ABC license to allow onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at an existing hotel. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon, uh, and I am here to bring this item to you. Give me just a moment to share my screen. So tonight, as the chair mentioned, we have a request for a use permit, uh, to obtain a type seventy ABC license for onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at Hotel fifteen fifty. And, um, my apologies, Madeline, would you, um, can you let our applicant, um, into, into the speaking room, please? Vipul Deal.
Brandon, um, let's not do that quite yet until, uh, until the chair opens public hearing.
Sure, sure. So this, uh, application for a use permit is at the lower end of El Camino Real, near the southern city limit, uh, with the city of Millbrae. It is currently an MXR multi-use residential zoning district. Staff does recommend that Planning Commission approve this use permit based on the findings and conditions of approval enclosed, uh, with this document. So the applicant proposes to obtain a type seventy license from the California Department of Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Control. Uh, this type of license is usually held by hotels to, um, offer complimentary happy hours for their guests or other, uh, alcohol, uh, services such as in-room alcohol services. Um, this type of license is limited to a hotel's overnight guests and their, uh, invites only. This proposal would allow the operators of Hotel fifteen fifty to furnish, uh, alcoholic beverages for consumption within the existing breakfast area and individual guest rooms. The hotel operators would like to add many bars in each of the guest rooms and also offer a manager's happy hour for marketing purposes on certain days of the week. Uh, as mentioned in their statement of operations, uh, they say that this is not something that is common uh, in the area and they believe this would help draw guests to stay at their, uh, hotel and also draw more guests to stay in San Bruno. And at this happy hour, they would be able to have a manager on site and, uh, converse with guests and find out their needs. So this hotel was originally approved, uh, in nineteen ninety-seven. The original use permit and conditions are attached to the, um, the agenda item. It was originally opened as Days Inn in two thousand and Hotel fifteen fifty was established here in February twenty twenty. So originally this site was zoned as C, general commercial, where a use permit was required to open a hotel in this zoning district. However, with the April ninth, twenty twenty-one zoning update, this site became MXR, multi-use residential focus, where hotel, uh, hotel is now a permitted use without a use permit. So Planning Commission is only, Planning Commission approval is only required for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the sites. The hotel operator will have to, um, after get, uh, getting this use permit, obtain their type seventy license directly from the ABC in order to serve alcoholic beverages. So the Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Police Department, have reviewed this application and included conditions of approval for both. A public hearing notices were mailed on April ninth. However, up until this time, there has been no public comment received on this item. It is exempt from CEQA based on, um, class one existing facilities. The site, uh, is located at the southern end of El Camino Real, adjacent to the city of Millbrae. It, it is a forty-eight room hotel and along a, uh, well-developed commercial corridor, surrounded by other restaurants, retail stores, banks, professional services and similar uses. Uh, behind the hotel, there are residential uses. However, within the general vicinity up and down El Camino Realities, commercial uses, uh, multi-use residential and the city of Millbrae, uh, commercial zoning districts. As mentioned, there has been no comments received yet at this time. So as previously mentioned, the existing hotel isn't allowed use and it was previously permitted through the former zone with a use permit in nineteen ninety-seven. However, per the San Bruno, uh, Municipal Code, section twelve point eight four point two one zero, a use permit is required to sell, serve and consume alcoholic beverages at this hotel. Currently, there are no other additional uses at the site such as restaurants. As mentioned, it is located along an established commercial corridor. There's several other restaurants, banks, retail stores and a liquor store nearby. So staff does not foresee that consumption of alcohol at the site will cause future problems for the neighborhood. Uh, in addition, this is not intended to be a primary source of income at the site and will be limited to, uh, just an option for guests in their personal room as well as limited manager's happy hour on certain days of the week. The Police Department has reviewed this request and provided clearance and, uh, also included recommended conditions of approval. If any of these are violated, uh, then the Planning Commission can hold a public hearing to revoke this use permit. Uh, there are, according to, uh, San Bruno Municipal Code, five findings that must be made uh, to grant a use permit to serve alcoholic beverages. They are listed here below, uh, and staff has found that, uh, the applicant or the, the project is in compliance with all of these findings. There is conditional use permits below, I mean, I'm sorry, conditions of approval below, um, that can be reviewed. And contained in the document are also, um, site locations, various photographs and the applicant's support statement. It is located, as mentioned, at the southern end of El Camino Real, uh, across the street from the city of Millbrae and a few blocks north of the city of Millbrae. There are some photos here of the hotel in its current state as well as photos of neighboring properties if, if you have not seen them already. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission?
Does anyone have questions for Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, how far is the nearest liquor store from this site?
Uh, it's, it's in the city of Millbrae, across the street and about half a block north.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for staff? Okay, Brandon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will, um, open up the public comment and we will, uh, if the applicant is here, we would, uh, love to hear from him.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, Commissioner Johnson has joined us.
Ah. Hello, Commissioner Johnson. Okay, is the applicant for this item with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Would you like to tell us about your project?
Yes, hi, uh, yes, hi, fellow commissioners and, um, staff, thank you very much, Brandon, for the intro. Um, so my name is Vipul Deal. My in-laws have owned this hotel since two thousand and six, since it was a Days Inn. And I've been running it, my wife and I have been running it since two thousand and nine. And so what, what we are proposing here on a very, very high level is to keep everything local, um, trying to attract business, you know, like, like Brandon mentioned, there was not this amenity, quote unquote, featured in other hotels. So we're trying to bring people to San Bruno to get TOTs and to just keep them here, here in San Bruno. So that's the major, that's like the overall forty thousand, you know, elevation idea behind this. Um, again, it's just used as amenity and not like a primary source of income. And, uh, yeah, we, we, we have a portfolio of nine hotels total and our other two hotels, um, also offer this. They're not here in California, but they're in Texas. And I would love to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Anyone? No? Okay, cool, go ahead, Kelly.
Good question. Um, I'm just curious if you, um, just out of curiosity, what, uh, other amenities do you offer? Do you offer like food or breakfast or, um, any other social things that would be kind of done in, in conjunction with your happy hours?
Yeah, great, great question. So pre-COVID, we used to have, uh, breakfast, but right now we don't have breakfast, but our plan is to have, uh, on-the-go breakfast. But during these events, we actually want to get with local San Bruno restaurants and have it pair with, you know, like a manager's hour where we have, you know, uh, we limit consumption obviously, but we also have a restaurant come in and showcase whatever they have and bring whatever they have so that they could experience San Bruno local life.
Great, thank you. That sounds wonderful.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Harmon?
Uh, I was just gonna ask, um, given your experience with your other hotels, um, so this is gonna be like a bar, but, or just the mini bars, but, uh, but not food. My impression is that typically like alcohol consumption in hotels is not, you don't tend to have, uh, problem drinkers the way you might with a sort of a dive bar or something, that, that that's pretty well regulated. Um, I don't know if you've had any experience with customers becoming unruly and how that's handled.
So, sorry, was there, so the question was, uh, if there's a bar there, if there's gonna be a bar, there's only gonna be mini bars, but potentially, uh, mini bars inside the rooms there themselves. And when Brandon mentioned like a happy hour that manager will do, all that's, all the, uh, alcohol stuff normally is behind the office in the back office and it's only given, you know, as needed. So there's no bar per se.
Did any, I'm sorry, go ahead, continue.
No, I was just, uh, sorry, I was just wondering if that answered the questions I had with.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was just wondering, like, I mean, typically like, to the extent that people overindulge in sort of, you know, hotel room booze, they're probably just gonna, it's sort of the, uh, sad drink in your room and pass out, so probably not, not an issue for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we haven't had the issue in other hotels. And this, we're not talking about a lot, right? Cause the rooms themselves at this hotel, especially in California, they're smaller anyways in size versus like Texas rooms a little bit bigger, uh, so the minibar itself would be tiny.
Commissioner, uh, Brandon?
Uh, so just so I'm clear on the happy hour, uh, manager's happy hour, these are not mixed drinks by a bartender. These are prepackaged cans and, you know, wine coolers or little shot bottles, that type of stuff? Or is someone mixing cocktails?
No, absolutely zero mixing cocktails. It would just be, it would just be stuff like, um, beers, like you said, wine cooler, spitzers, yeah, just like that. There'll be no mixing of alcohol. When you start doing that, it's when like you, you fall into like bart, you know, you have to have a bartender there to serve it and all this other kind of stuff. So we wanna keep it as simple as possible, easier for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Chair Johnson?
So, uh, in response to your happy hour, you said as needed. So there truly isn't a happy hour. It's if people want to replenish, then they would contact you. A happy hour, I interpret it as more of a social, that being offered, there's, uh, someone serving drinks. Sometimes there's snacks there and it's typically not done in the smaller hotels as yours, uh, as this type rather. But, um, so I just wanna get clarification that your, this is not the typical happy hour. I heard you mention happy hours, so I wanted just to get clarification on, on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I mentioned happy hour. It's by, it's hundred percent not a happy hour. Um, it's more of like a meet and greet type situation where the manager comes in or, you know, the assistant manager comes in and tries to guess, gets to know the guests on a more personal level. And what that, we're, what we're trying to do is to find out where these people are coming from and then do some more research. It's all, it's more for a marketing actually play, uh, than it is for the actual, you know, drinks. Yeah, we'll be serving it, but it's more to find out, mingle with guests and see, see where they're coming from and then market to that, to that area.
So this basically provides opportunity for guests to have, um, uh, refreshments of, of their choice.
Correct.
On alcoholic versus non-alcoholic inner rooms. It's really the intent of this is what it sounds like.
Correct.
It's very common in, in hotels.
Yes, exactly. And you're right, but, uh, not smaller ones, then that's why I wanna, and I could think outside the box and just, um, you know, just offer it and see, and see where we go.
Okay. Were there any other questions for the applicant at this point? Anyone? Okay, um, we're gonna open it up to the public for comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, once again, it's on Zoom. Use the raise your hand and if you're on the phone, it's star nine. And Madeline, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
We have no speakers.
Okay. We'll give it just a second or two more. All right, can we get a motion in a second to close the public hearing? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, Madeline, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen? Commissioner Lethen?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry, my, my space bar isn't happy when I have the, the minute or the, the staff report open. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Um, is there any comments or would, uh, other things on this item or does someone wanna make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, um, use permit two one zero dash zero zero four based on findings one to five and conditions one to fourteen.
And do we have anyone wanna make a second one, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Madeline, can we do another roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson, you're on mute.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Right, at that point, we'll move on to item four B, which is six five nine Huntington. It's a request to amend use permit and architectural review permit to expand an existing gaming facility at Artichoke Joe's pursuant to twelve point nine six point one two zero and twelve point one zero eight point zero one zero of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Oh, that's right, uh, we have, excuse me.
Yeah, we need to excuse, uh, both commissioners.
Okay, guys.
Can we just log off if this is the last item or?
No, uh, Morgan will bring you back. Madeline's gonna temporarily remove you and you'll be back.
So are we, okay.
Then we're good.
We're good.
So, staff report, please.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Uh, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. Uh, so the request before you is for a use permit and architectural review permit to allow the construction of exterior architectural improvements and a three thousand four hundred and eleven square foot addition at the north end of the building that would enlarge the kitchen and add a storage area for the restaurant associated with the Artichoke Joe's Casino. And this is located at six fifty-nine Huntington Avenue. Uh, the applicant also has a companion request for a temporary use permit to allow temporary kitchen trailers to be installed in the existing parking lot for up to one year to maintain the casino's food operations during the construction. Uh, let me share my screen with you really quickly. All right. Okay, so, um, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, so the two point eight three acre project site is triangular in shape and bounded by San Mateo Avenue to the west, Huntington Avenue to the north and east, and Angus Avenue to the south. Uh, the site is developed with a combination of six different buildings that are connected through openings that comprise the Artichoke Joe's Casino and Restaurant and surrounded by surface parking lots associated with the use. The casino and restaurant complex occupy thirty now, thirty-nine thousand square feet of floor area and there are four hundred and forty-six parking spaces located on and off-site, which meets the parking demands for the use. Uh, the subject kitchen building, which, uh, we're gonna be talking about today, was constructed in nineteen thirty-five. So that's the northernmost building in the complex. Uh, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing kitchen addition at the north end of the site and construct a first and second floor addition at the north end of the building and exterior architectural improvements that would give the building that comprised the Artichoke Joe's Casino, a more architecturally unified appearance. Uh, the addition would enlarge the kitchen, create cold and storage, uh, cold and dry storage rooms and create a new loading dock for the use. A corner element that is clad in brick veneer would accent the northwest corner of the building and anchor the development. The new food storage rooms would replace three existing metal shipping containers located in the same location uh, near the loading dock and a fourth shipping container located out in the parking lot on the north side of the building. The addition will be topped with a tall rooftop parapet that would screen the rooftop mounted mechanical equipment but will mimic the appearance of a second floor, complete with faux windows. And at the second floor, located above the new storage room, would be a new office storage room, um, would be added for the office, uh, uses on the second floor in the building next door. Uh, the proposed exterior architectural improvements would include the following. A new roof parapet at the northern edge of the building to screen the existing and proposed rooftop mechanical units from view. Uh, new faux windows are proposed along the San Mateo Avenue elevation, some of which will have aluminum canopies and as shown in the striped, uh, shown with the stripes. Uh, there's new drive-it finish and trim details and a new cornice details. And all the buildings will repaint, be repainted at the northern end of the site with a green color palette, uh, with the red trim to match all the, the rest of the buildings in the complex. The project would not alter the historic portion of the Artichoke Joe's Casino, which is the bar portion, bar slash restaurant portion, and it would not increase the patron capacity of either the restaurant or the casino. Furthermore, no new gaming tables would be added as a result of the proposed project and it would not result in the elimination of any parking spaces permanently. All of the proposed, uh, exterior modifications would be architecturally consistent with alterations that were made to the Artichoke Joe's Casino when it was heavily remodeled in two thousand and seventeen and will give the complex a more unified architectural appearance, uh, transforming, and also transform the northern entrance to the downtown. So a little bit of background on this project, um, this project actually came to the Planning Commission in April of twenty nineteen. Um, and it was granted, um, a, a use permit, uh, for an extension of similar size. It was actually two thousand four hundred and eleven square feet at that time. Uh, and it was also a two-story addition at the nor, northern side of the building to expand the kitchen. Um, in January twenty twenty, prior to the expiration of that use permit, the applicant submitted an application to extend that use permit, but was unable to exercise the provisions of the code which would allow a permit extension because the project that was submitted at that time was, uh, large. uh larger than the original project that was approved by the planning commission in twenty nineteen. And so that project, which is the project before you, um is a thousand square feet bigger than the original project which you reviewed in twenty nineteen. Um, after the project was approved in twenty nineteen, the applicant subsequently applied for a temporary use permit to allow temporary kitchen kitchen trailers to be installed on the existing parking lot for up to one year to maintain the casino's food operations during construction. And this issue actually came up at the two twenty nineteen planning commission meeting where one of the planning commissioners, I recall, um asked whether or not the food operations for the restaurant would continue um when the addition was under construction. And it came out at that time that um that their intent was to install the temporary kitchen structures, but they had not actually applied for it. So they applied for it um after they had the initial approval. Um, this project has been reviewed by the ARC uh for a second time because it was approved. Uh, it was reviewed by the ARC a first time for the two thousand nineteen review, and now we call this the twenty twenty one review. Most recently, the ARC voted in July of twenty twenty to forward the project. Um, voted three nothing to forward the project to the planning commission with staff's recommendation to resurface and re-stripe the small parking lot on the north side of the building. And that's because that parking lot is a bit scaled, um, the surface and the signage in that parking lot, the parking signage is not permanently in the ground and it's like sitting in these uh buckets. Since the ARC's recommendation in July twenty twenty, um, what happened? Well, the COVID happened and so the casino's operations actually shifted outdoors. Uh, and so proceeding with the project that time was kind of an unknown. They didn't know um whether or not they were going to be able to move forward with it. They already had their operations under a big tent in the parking lot, which is nearby where the temporary structures were going to go. So things were put on hold by the applicant. So a little bit about the the improvements. One of the big uh benefits of the project for the city are the proposed roof parapets at the northern side of the building that are designed to hide the exposed mechanical equipment on the roof. Uh, the decorative parapets will greatly improve the appearance of the north side of the complex, which is highly visible as one enters downtown San Bruno from the north. Another benefit of the project for the city are the proposed improvements to the San Mateo Avenue elevations. The idea with the display windows is to attempt to activate the frontage by placing enlarged historic photos of Artichoke Joe's and downtown San Bruno into those display windows. And what it does is it it gives a little bit of uh pedestrian interest to portions of the building which are kind of blank right now at the at the street level. Uh, new canopy, new aluminum canopies would be placed over the windows to give a a little bit of a pedestrian scale. And the second floor windows would be faux. Um, that would match the existing faux windows along the west facade. Uh, that is set back from San Mateo Avenue behind the parking lot. And um on the screen now is the back portion. This is the northern side of the com- uh complex. This is the proposal. So you can see the nice um cornice line along the top there. This is the loading dock uh down here. And so these these all take, get a big improvement over what's there right now. Uh, which what you see right now is a chain link fence and um kind of a back of house operations. But um it doesn't work that well considering how visible it is uh as one enters downtown from the north. So a little bit about the temporary use permit. Um, the the applicant is requesting a temporary use permit to allow up to three temporary kitchen buildings, one temporary bathroom building, one temporary dry storage container, a temporary refrigerator and freezer units, and associated temporary enclosures and ramps connecting the structures to be installed in the existing parking lot for up to one year. And on the image on your screen right now, you can see my uh my cursor is hovering over the area where the um temporary structures will be installed in the parking lot. And so this is the little smaller parking lot along San Mateo Avenue. And you can see that's on the opposite side of the building from where the addition is proposed at the extreme northern end of the building. And uh I think the the tent is somewhere in this area right, right here. So the the um, this area was chosen for its location close to the existing um casino and it's able so that there would be less conflict between food servers and um vehicular traffic. This area will be fenced off, this T U P area where the temporary structures are going. Um, and so it keeps everything kind of tight so that you don't have people, because they they have space for such facilities in other parts of the parking lot, but they would have a lot longer walk for those uh food servers uh to reach their destination with the food. Um, so uh notification, we sent out notification to uh property owners within three hundred feet. We also posted the site for the temporary use permit requirements. And we haven't received any public comments um on the project. Overall, staff finds the proposed exterior modifications would be architecturally consistent with the alterations that were made to Artichoke Joe's Casino in twenty seventeen. And will give the overall complex a really uh unified architectural theme, whereas right now it looks like a series of disparate buildings as especially as you get more towards the northern side of the development. Furthermore, because of the project's ability to strengthen an existing downtown business and transform the northern entrance to downtown San Bruno, staff is recommending approval of the project based on findings one through ten in the staff report and conditions of approval one through forty two in the staff report. So uh this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael? Anyone? No. Kelly, go ahead.
I do have one question. Um, and that is on, uh, I remember reviewing this in two thousand nineteen. And I know that one of the um, the areas that was being added, one of the the functions that was being added uh in the new square footage was a a room for a lactation room. And uh, I was, it was mentioned again in this report that it, there was one, but I didn't see it noted in the uh floor plan.
Yeah, I know, I don't specifically recall if a lactation room is still included in the design. But I do remember that because for some reason I actually called it out in the in the staff report, in the original staff report. But I'm not sure. Um, I would need to take a look at the plan briefly.
Okay, I think it's it's an important thing having a mother. I think that would be beneficial to keep. I think it was mentioned. I just didn't see it noted. So if you could look, that'd be great.
Sure, I will do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Michael? No? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and open it up to the public and we will bring in the applicant or the architect if he uh would like to speak to us.
Michael, may I have the name of the architect?
Sure. Uh, I know one is Steve. Um, and let me, let me take a look at the participants.
Fine.
Uh, and Vince DeFreeze. Yeah, we can hear you, Steve, but hold on. Uh, Vince DeFreeze is also part of the project team.
Great, thank you.
And I'm not sure about Valerie. Steve, is Valerie part of your project team?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. So who would like to speak to us from the applicants?
I can, I can start. That I'm Stephen Leslie, the architect. And as Michael mentioned, Vince DeFreeze, the president of Artichoke Joe's is also present to answer questions. I guess I'll, I'll answer first the lactation room. Um, in the, in the new drawings, um, it where the lactation room was going to go, it shows a janitor room because we we swapped it. So the lactation room has already been established and is in the old part of the card room. So it was going to be in in the new, but we, things were taking too long and we needed one, so we already have one set up. So now the, the location that was going to be lactation is now uh identified as janitor. Just.
Great.
It's there.
Thank you for for phoning up on that. That's important.
Great. Um, I don't know if, I mean, I don't have, uh, Michael did a good job of presenting everything. The only thing I can do, I don't know if I can share this screen here. I don't know if this helps out. We paid a professional render to render it. The the rendering that Michael showed is my out of the box uh CAD program. But if you want to see um a nice rendering that we did, I don't know if I can share a screen. Am I able to do that?
Uh, Steve, do you see a share screen button anywhere on your uh?
I do not. I see a raised hand and a leave and a mute. Well, well, it looks nice. I thought I'd be able to. I know in in other Zoom meetings I'd been able to uh share a screen, but it's it's the same. It's just a a pretty, prettier rendering, a little more polished, but but we feel will be a great addition to downtown and and to Artichoke Joe's. So we're, obviously COVID has really um hit us hard. We were shut down for three months from March to June. The tent went up in June of uh last year and we were in the tent for quite a while and now we're kind of half and half. So we're still not fully inside, but you know, with being in, I believe we're in orange, we're able to go kind of fifty fifty. So things are still, we're we're hoping to be out of the, totally inside. And and once we do that, then we can move a, move, forge ahead with the project. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have questions for the applicant? Anyone?
Commissioner, I would, you know, I would like to add to Steve's comments if I could.
Please, Steve.
So I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, we're very excited about getting this project underway. But obviously, like Steve said, COVID really put a damper on our operations. So we can't, we don't want to start it until we get this big massive tent out of our parking lot, which obviously, if you ask the question when, we don't know. But that's our goal to start. But I I also want to make sure you understand that our, our whole goal of the architectural design is to make that gateway like uh Michael mentioned, to make it look very pleasant. I, it's, we're an eyesore. We know that with a, with with that whole north side. So our goal and and very proudly, we want to make it look so when people come to downtown San Bruno, it looks beautiful. And behind the scenes, our our building is just literally deteriorating. I mean, it's just that whole north side of the building is in bad, bad shape. So it's it's a must item for us to do something with that kitchen.
Thank you. Okay. Um, are there any other comments or questions? For the applicant or the architect? Anyone? No? Okay.
I'll just comment as it, it would be a huge improvement to the approach to downtown San Bruno.
Agreed. Uh, Kelly, go ahead.
I, I was going to say the same thing. I'm really pleased with with the um, the effort and the thought that you've put into really making an entryway into our downtown that that everybody can take pride in. It's great. Thank you.
Mary Lou, do you have any? You're on mute. No?
Right, so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm anxious. No, there aren't any more comments. I'm happy to make a motion.
Oh, no, we still got to do public comment, Mary.
That's right. I'm ahead of the game. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, through through the chair, before we go to public comment, I just wanted to add, if I could.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that um so with the new zoning, with the new zoning code update, the entitlement is good for two years. Uh, so they have two years from the date you guys approve this, uh, it should be approved today um to carry out the project. The temporary use permit is good for one year per code. And that starts from the day they put the structures on the site. Um, so if it takes longer than one year and they need those structures for longer than that, then they could be back before this commission asking for an extension.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to make one comment to the owners and the architect. Thank you for your patience on this project. This seems like it's been years in the process. I know people get frustrated waiting and waiting for permits and things to get projects done, so thank you for your patience. Okay, let's open it up to the public. Um, if there's anyone who'd like to speak to us on Zoom, raise your hand. On the phone, it's star nine. And Madeline, do we have anyone up there?
We have one speaker, Chair.
Please.
Iris Harmon, can you hear us?
I just wanted to remark, as a member of the public uh and the resident tech nerd, um, I think the reason that you were having trouble with uh getting the screen share from our uh applicant is that he was uh promoted to a participant with the right to speak, but not to a presenter. So if you did want to see the uh, the new rendering, you would need to promote him to a presenter. And then you can take this as ninety percent humorous and ten percent, I really like artichokes. I've always found it disappointing that the Artichoke Joe's Kitchen did not have like a signature artichoke dish. And so if the expanded kitchen did, I'd be very happy as a, as a person that lives nearby and would be delighted to come in and patronize. So anyway, that's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
I just want to comment that if you haven't been in there and eaten the Papa Dennis Burger, then you have missed out. Because Papa Dennis Burger is pretty amazing and it is an Artichoke Joe's special and quite reasonable.
Nice. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Madeline, did you want to try promoting them so that we could see that screenshot if they still wanted to or?
Sure, hold on a moment.
Thank you.
Hello, Steve?
There we go. Well, it looks really nice.
To the Chair?
Yes.
I served on the architectural review and um uh, I'm really glad we got to see this because it's reflected some of the thing, for some of the color schemes with the brick being more of a burgundy and the background was brighter and so they, it has toned down. It's still a little on the bright side, but it looks good. And um, and trying to get it away from a Christmas look, but it looks very festive and and bright. But I'm really glad that we could get that chance to see the rendering.
Very good.
Huge difference.
All right. Thank you, Madeline. Can we bring it back to the breakaway meeting? Thank you. All right. This is the point in time where uh public comment is applicable for us. Uh, public comment is open. So if you'd like to speak to the commission on this issue, uh, raise your hand or star nine. And Madeline, do we have anyone out there waiting to speak to us?
There are no speakers, Chair.
Okay. Can we get a motion in a second to close public hearing?
A motion to be closed public hearing.
Thank you. And can we get a second, please?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Madeline, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Chair Biassodi.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Four zero, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll bring it back to the commission now for further comments, discussion, or a motion in a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Architectural Review Committee permit AR twenty dash zero zero one. A use permit uh UP eighteen uh. AR 20-001, a use permit UP 18-031, and temporary use permit TUP 190, or -002, based on findings 1 to 10 and conditions 1 to 42.
Thank you. Was anyone making a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madeline, may we have another roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Pia Sodi.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
4-0, motion passes.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item five, items from staff. I have selection in May 13th. Oh, wait a minute, we need to bring everybody back.
Yes.
Sorry, got carried away there.
It's okay.
Everyone should be back.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we're back to item five, which is selection of the May 13th, 2021 Architectural Review Committee meeting. Do you have any volunteers?
If I can have three volunteers for the May Architectural Review Hearing, just to give you a little preview, we are taking a number of the residential projects to the Architectural Review Board for review and possibly a subdivision that you all been long waiting for at the corner of San Bruno and Glenview Terrace. So that should also be coming to Architectural Review Committee first, then Planning Commission, and then the City Council for final approval. I know that it's been in the works for some time, and this is an exciting year. Every month you get to see a new project that's been in the pipeline for a while. Don't, all you speak at once, just need three volunteers.
I served on the most recent one. I can be available if we need an alternate. I would prefer not to be on, you know, every consecutive meeting.
I'll be on.
Got it. Commissioner Madden, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Morgan as the alternate, and Commissioner Lethen and Vice Chair as the alternate.
Sure.
All right, write it down before I forget.
Thank you all for volunteering, and thank you Commissioner Harmon for all the times that you've served. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, which is public comments not on the agenda. So before we adjourn, oh, sorry.
Sorry. I like my old hand other than the big hand. I have another item that did not make the agenda, if I can just take a minute of your time. So on Thursday, there will be a county-sponsored webinar talking about housing, and our regional allocation Rena number, Vice Chair Harmon attended the first one about two weeks ago. So as I mentioned, this is hosted by the Sematell County and also the 21 Elements with all 21 cities talking about housing. This is an outreach tool as for the housing element update. So on Thursday night, April 22nd, from 6 o'clock to 7:30, there will be a webinar. You can find out more information on our website as well as the county website, and there's also a post on the Nextdoor social media. So the focus this time will be mainly on what is Rena, what does it do, how does it tie into the housing element, and how basically treat it as a Rena number, a 101 session. So if you're interested, definitely sign up and listen in, and also if you'd like to spread out the words for us, that'd be great, too.
Through the chair? I hope that Pamela, you would be able to email us that information so we have it.
I can certainly do that.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, okay, item six, public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone wishing to address the commission, now would be the time to do it for items not on the agenda. Madeline, do we have anyone out there?
We do not.
Okay. Items from members in subcommittees, anyone? Commissioner Harmon?
Since Pamela brought it up, I just wanted to thank the staff for their work on the San Bruno-focused portion of that 21 Elements event. It was really useful information, and I thought, you know, you sometimes have these events and people can be heated about some of these issues, but I thought that the San Bruno breakout was just a tremendously positive conversation, that the contributions from our friends that are the manager of Tanforan who came were really interesting, and I thought it was a great session, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right. Our next regular Planning Commission meeting will be held on May 18th at 7:00 p.m., and since I don't have a gavel and this sits on my desk and I never use it, we are adjourned.